So greetings, everybody. Uh, this is the December second, two thousand twenty-five. Meeting of the Wyndham Select Board at six thirty P M. And I see someone coming in. That's Peter. Great. We have all five members here, Peter Clay, Karen Anger, Deirdre Parati, Gary Cheeseman, and Ben Timman. Welcome, everyone. Um, hope everybody had a nice Thanksgiving. And the first agenda item is public comment. Um, this is for comments on any issue that is not already on the agenda. Um, if you have comments on something on the agenda, um, you'll have the opportunity to comment if you're a member of the public. Uh, when we get to that agenda item, uh, are there any public comments? Anyone who wishes to make public comments at this time? Um, I see no hands raised. Great. That moves us to, uh, Town Administrator's Report, I believe.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, yeah, so you can share the packet if you want.
Okay.
Uh, so yeah, so well, first is that the CPC, uh, application deadline is this Friday on, uh, the fifth. And, um, so and of note, the town hall debt will be, uh, this will be the last year of town hall debt, so that will be paid off in its entirety. Uh, we're also, uh, the Select Board's Office is working with the Veterans Committee to coordinate an application for the War Memorial directly across the street from Town Hall. So that would include, uh, complete sandblasting of the iron fence that surrounds it, uh, and repainting. And also a, uh, restoration of the memorial itself. We also, um, recently had a, uh, a roof, uh, study done on the, um, VPW Building, Town Hall, and Police Station. The fire station was just recently done, uh, through Capitol a few years ago. And, uh, the Town Hall roof is in need of replacement or, you know, is at the point now where the shingles are lifting. And although we don't have any leaks, now is the time to replace it. So we'll be filling out an application for that as well, given the historic nature of Town Hall. Uh, and then another reminder that this Saturday is the budget hearing. The budget hearing is going to be from eight thirty to eleven thirty to ensure that everybody will be out by noon time, which is or before noon time, which will be so everybody who wants to can attend Reeds Across America, which will start, uh, at the Main Street Cemetery at noon. And, um, another thing of note for the budget hearing is that uh, we're gonna change the format a little bit. Uh, we're gonna do a, uh, Jeff and I will be doing, um, most of the presenting, uh, on that day. We think that it will, um, you know, kind of be a little bit more based on the feedback is, you know, uh, the folks, both FinCom and Select Board want, you know, to be concise and, and finance related. And, um, so we're going to do that. And we'll also be incorporating uh, a little bit of a budget overview, which is normally done at a Select Board meeting, uh, in, uh, December at, at night. But we think that, given the new streamlined approach, we'll be able to incorporate both and likely still be out, um, you know, by eleven o'clock, eleven thirty at the latest.
Um, Steve, just to confirm, the Reeds Across America is the thirteenth, not the sixth.
Is it?
Yeah, so the sixth, but, um, that's, the dates are on.
Okay. Well, no, thank you for pointing that out. I've been operating as if it was this Saturday. So, thank you. Um, and then I just want to, uh, remind folks that winter parking ban is in effect. Uh, it started on No- November fifteenth and will run through, um, April. And we're going to be putting that on the lightboard, uh, in front of Town Hall. And that's all I have for updates tonight.
Thanks, Steve. Um, couple things for me. One, uh, pertains to what you just referenced. The final bond interest payment on the Town Hall. Um, so the twentieth year of payments. Um, that may be something we want to do a little public education and maybe some commemoration around, I think, next year, uh, when that comes up for town meeting. Um, what a lot of people don't know is that when when I'm passed the Community Preservation Act in, I believe, two thousand and five, um, one of the rationales for doing so was because money could be, um, raised for historic preservation and specifically, uh, to pay for the historic restoration of the Town Hall, which was on the special town meeting warrant, um, uh, at the same time, those passed at the same time, CPC, CPA, rather, and, um, the vote to fund the Town Hall restoration. Um, so the people of Wyndham should be, you know, proud that, that they've been able to collectively through, through their tax dollars and the CPA, um, you know, now complete the, um, funding obligations for, for Town Hall. And of course, like any of us who own homes or properties, uh, in the intervening twenty years, it's not as if there haven't been other, um, renovation needs for, for our wonderful building, including what you just mentioned, Steve, the roof, and obviously the big HVAC project and probably several others over the years. But anyway, I don't, I did want to mention that, given that, um, you brought that up. And I think that, um, maybe we can do a little, a little bit of nostalgic, um, uh, updates next year when that, when that comes around. Um, the other thing I wanted to mention was to extend, um, on behalf of the board, our well wishes to our Hamilton Select Board colleague, Rosemary Kennedy, who, um, as many of you, I think everybody probably on the, on the Zoom knows, and it was in the Hamilton Wyndham news, um, last week, uh, was pretty badly injured in a, in a really unfortunate accident that occurred in Ipswich. Um, and I know that she is recuperating, um, is not yet out of, uh, the hospital. But thankfully, um, I believe is, you know, on the road to recovery. But just wanted to extend, um, our, our wishes to her. And I think that Gary may be organizing, uh, a card for, um, the Wyndham Select Board members to sign, uh, to send to Rosie Kennedy. That was all I had, and so would pass it on to Gary if you have any comments.
Yes, I'll have that card available for, uh, Saturday morning. But, uh, also like to, uh, as we get into December here, the last committee meetings of the calendar year, that the chairman and clerks need to start preparing their annual, uh, inputs for the, uh, town report. So that's all I have.
Great. Um, Deirdre, anything?
Thank you.
Okay. Aaron?
Just a reminder that we have a large number of children who will be caroling on the twelfth, which is a Friday. Um, and anyone who is looking for a little holiday cheer for folks to come to their home can reach out to me directly.
Great, thank you. Peter?
Yeah, I'm just happy to say that, or report that, uh, the general football team beat Ipswich.
Yeah, big victory.
Yeah, I, they were down at halftime and, uh, they just smoked them in the second half.
Great. Um, all right. Well, thank you. Uh, we don't have anything on the consent agenda. Um, and that moves us to, uh, to new business. Uh, we're gonna pass over, um, item A, the appointment of the two hundred and fiftieth anniversary uh, committee. There've been, uh, there's been a change in the prospective appointments to that committee. So we're going to, um, defer that until a future meeting, which brings us to item B. Tax classification. Steve, do you want to take that?
Yeah, so this is post, this was advertised for seven P M. So if we could take some quick items, um, you know, I could do the budget overview. I could do the trash working group overview.
Yeah, whichever one, whichever one you think makes sense to do before seven.
All right, we might get, be able to get a couple in there. Let's, uh, just take them in order. If you want to just go to, uh, to D, Michelle? So the long and short of it is I wanted to share, you know, what would be, you know, although all budgets technically fall under the Select Board, these budgets fall more specifically under the Select Board's Office. So I wanted to just run through this quickly and answer any questions. I can go as much detail as you want. But basically, um, the budgets, uh, are are contractually obligatedly driven. So we have, um, we have our union, uh, uh, contractually obligated adjustments. We have three percent non-union COLA that the Select Board discussed last year when, uh, aligning with, with the union adjustments. And then if you scroll to, um, so you'll see all the salary lines are, are three percent. If you go down to the Town Hall budget. Well, what we're doing here is we're slowly ratcheting down on the utility reserve, um, which was, if you remember, it originally started out at a hundred thousand dollars about three years ago, when, um, utilities started to go crazy and, you know, the forecasting amounts were, depending on what you read, eighty to a hundred percent increase, um, over, and over a number of months. So that, luckily, that didn't come true, although they have, uh, increased significantly. So we've been reducing the utility reserve slowly over the last, uh, few years and, um, building into the budgets, budget, uh, each budget and Town Hall being one of them, because it's a building. Uh, the, the actual utility expenditures, which was always the plan, the, the idea with the utility reserve was to be able to, um, you know, kind of remain con- in control of the money and not have it spread out through, you know, half a dozen different, uh, facility accounts. And to see what the, uh, utilities did and as things kind of stream, uh, smoothed out and we could have a better idea of predicting the future, uh, we've been slowly moving that back into the utility accounts. And, um, you know, than that, it is, uh, really just some adjustments to, um, accommodate the, uh, increasing costs to provide town meeting with the, you know, additional needs for added, uh, um, A V equipment, uh, and, and, um, you know, electronic voting. And the, the rest of it is, uh, is held flat. And with that, I believe there are no other changes. All the expenses are level funded with the exception of utilities in the iron rail. Um, any, any questions that anybody has?
None here. Anybody else?
Uh, there's no vote needed or anything. I just didn't want it to be the first time you saw it was on Saturday morning. So any questions that, you know, you had or changes that you requested, we could, uh, take care of it between now and then.
Great. All right. Do you want to do the trash contract?
Yeah, yep. So that we formed some time ago a trash working group. Um, that was made up of, uh, a couple of FinCom members, uh, myself, Ben Timman, Karen Anger, uh, Jeff Sullard, uh, Joe Pesamato. And basically what, what we said, uh, orig- originally, if you, if you go back about three years ago, the, the projection from Casella, who is our current provider, was about eighty percent increase, uh, when we had to renew the contract. Uh, that wasn't really far outside of what some other communities were seeing, uh, when they were renewing. They get to remember this is a ten-year contract, uh, and the, the world of, you know, waste management disposal has changed significantly in ten years. So that wasn't outside, um, you know, the realm of possibilities. So we took that increase seriously and formed the working group and decided to, uh, you know, to help work through our different options. And, you know, initially we were expecting to do an RFP and we were expecting to have to amend our services that we receive, uh, from our service provider and that, you know, a re- reduction in the amount of trash you can throw out, uh, implementing some sort of fee-for-service program to offset the increase. Uh, and those are the types of things we started looking at. However, you know, as we got closer in the market, coming out of COVID has kind of, uh, smoothed out a little bit. And, you know, we've all learned a lot about the waste disposal business. And looking at the landscape out there, there's really only three providers that can, um, uh, provide, uh, the level of service that, that Wyndham has, has come to, uh, enjoy. That's Casella, which, like I said, is our current vendor. Republic Services, which I'm sure everyone is aware of, because a lot of the surrounding communities had Republic and they just, um, uh, or had an extended strike where, uh, services were, uh, significantly disrupted and still remain disrupted to this day, even though the strike, the strike has been resolved. And then Hiltz, which was actually, uh, the vendor that the town of Wyndham and Hamilton were in contract with, uh, prior to Casella, when Hiltz de- determined that the contract was not profitable for them and broke the contract and walked away from the services. And that's when, uh, Hamilton and Wyndham, uh, had a scramble and, uh, contracted with Casella. So, you know, in addition to, uh, Republic's, um, you know, uh, labor problems, they're also significantly more expensive. Uh, and on top of, uh, just the service delivery expenses and the trash disposal being more expensive, they also have told us that they're looking at a twelve to eighteen month, uh, back, um, uh, logistical issue with the, with the trucks. So they would, from the time we were awarded, they would need twelve to eighteen months to secure the trash trucks. And when we would have to pay between thirty and forty thousand dollars a month to lease trucks in the interim. Um, and you know, and then at, at the end of the day, the, the overall increase, working with Casella, who we have, uh, an existing relationship with and from really from all accounts, it's, it's a good relationship. Of course, you know, some hiccups happen and problems, and we do receive some complaints. But Casella really does go above and beyond, um, in trying to make things right. And, uh, so, you know, we, the Trash Working Group has reviewed this memo that I sent to the Select Board and all the, all the points in it and that, you know, also that little bit of the high level I just provided. And has determined that they believe that the best course of action for the Select Board to take is to, uh, continue to negotiate directly with Casella and not, uh, forego an RFP process, given the, uh, relationship we already enjoy, uh, with them and want to continue that relationship. And where our preliminary research has indicated that Casella is the most competitive in price. Um, and we're looking at at least initially about a twenty percent increase in year one with a five percent escalator in years two through five. And, um, we've been planning on an increase much larger than that. So we have been shifting, uh, free cash over the last few years into our stabilization fund in anticipation of a large increase. So with those funds will be, we have a funding scheme that will be able to, um, essentially step into the increase over a number of years, usually it's using a small amount of free cash in a decreasing schedule over three or four years that will allow us to fit the increase within our proposition two and a half levy limit. So from this meeting, I'm looking for the Select Board, um, to, I guess, allow me to move forward with the contracting process, uh, with Casella directly, uh, in, in partnership with Hamilton, um, and, uh, to start to solidify that contract.
So Steve, I mean, that's a big deal. I mean, we thought it was gonna be much worse than what you're currently presenting to us.
Agreed. Yeah, it's, it's definitely, very rarely do you get news on, uh, when it comes in less than you expect.
I mean, for two years now, we've been, we've been like worrying about this tr- trash deal.
Yeah, I mean, it's still a bit, twenty percent is still a big increase, but yes, it's much less than, than we anticipated. And a big part of it was, if, you know, if you go back, feels like COVID was forever ago. But if you go back two or three years, um, you know, the world was kind of still upside down with the logistical nightmares with the shipping and where are we gonna put the trash and labor shortages and, and all of that? So, uh, we're just lucky that things have kind of settled down and, you know, came back down into a more reasonable, or at least an increase that we can manage.
So you, you say, you say lucky, Steve, but really, um, it was a lot of talent and skill and diligence on your part, Jeff Sullard, Rich Suzan, if I'm missing anybody. And Joe, you were involved in that, in it as well. Um, I apologize if I missed anybody, but, but being on the working group and we, we were just getting updates from, from you folks on how this was going. And I was perpetually impressed by the work that you guys did. And, um, as Peter said, I mean, it's, it's a huge relief and the fact that we're gonna have level services for that period of time and at a cost increase that's much, 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 much lower than we expected is really a credit to the hard work that you and your team did. So, um, all the credit really goes to, uh, to you and the team.
I agree.
Gary?
Quick question, Steve. So the final contract, you know, the service comes to both Hamilton Wyndham, but do each town have its own contract at the endpoint?
My understanding is it will be that is similar to now, it's one contract, but the services are spelled out and the pricing schedule is, is separate in the appendix.
Very well. And what's the?
The bills are separate, like they don't, we don't pay a, like a combined bill with Hamilton. We have our own deal, uh, you know, and that will remain to be the same, but I'm pretty sure, I'm thinking back, that the overarching contract in all the, the costing, um, is in one, one, one big contract.
So the current contract runs out when? And when do we expect to sign the new one?
The contract runs out on June thirtieth. So we expect and need to sign the new one at some point between now and then. You know, and just, just for folks who, you know, weren't part of the working group and on this call, we did look at separating Hamilton and Wyndham, uh, and doing our own thing. You know, if, if that was advantageous to the town, however, um, there, there is, uh, huge, um, incentives to keep the contract together, uh, both in economies of scale from, um, you know, have them being able to, uh, staff a, a, you know, labor force five days a week where, you know, uh, Wyndham occupies two days and Hamilton, given its size occupies three and the ability to, um, spread out the capital cap cost, uh, for purchasing all the equipment over, uh, the two communities, because in, in either situation with both vendors, uh, dedicated trucks would be purchased for the contract and they depreciate those over, over the life of the contract. So you could see, you know, we'd be picking up a hundred percent of the depreciation that would be reflected in our fee. Uh, in, in this case, we're, uh, you know, we're picking up, um, our share of whatever, you know, whatever the two, two three, about sixty percent, forty percent of, uh, the capital appreciation. So it certainly made a lot of sense from a financial standpoint.
Are there any other questions or comments from members of the board? Seeing none, uh, Joe, is there anybody online who has their hand up to comment on this?
No, there is not.
All right, great. Would someone like to read the motion? Would entertain, um, a motion to?
I'm ready, Ben.
Okay, thank you, Deirdre. Go ahead.
Move to approve negotiation with Casella regarding the regional solid waste contract in lieu of issuing an RFP.
Gary, seconds?
All right, we have a motion and a second. Thank you. Roll call, vote, Karen?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Deirdre?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
And Ben is yes. All right, thanks. So it's now, um, five fifty-five. Do we have anything short that we could fit in, Steve, or?
I, I believe that the draft letter, uh, expressing support for the Affordable Housing Trust request to the Community Preservation Committee for twenty-four Cherry Street will be quick.
Great. And I meant six fifty-five, my apologies. Um, yes, so let's go ahead and do that. Is there anything to present on that by, or, um, should we just?
Yeah, we're just, I'm just, um, we're just scrolling down to the memo. So basically, this is a memo we'd like to send to the CPC, um, on behalf of the Select Board. I don't know if anybody got a chance to read it, but effectively what it is, is the Wyndham, uh, Affordable Housing Trust, it, uh, plans on submitting an application requesting three hundred thousand dollars from the CPC, which is one hundred thousand dollars a unit to redevelop twenty-four Cherry Street. You know, as we've, we've talked a lot about it, but to make the, um, economics work in an affordable housing development, uh, typically they need, um, you know, additional funding, either through straight state grants, uh, or, you know, in this case, the Affordable Housing Trust. And we believe that the economics will work if the state, uh, is to dispose of the property for a dollar to, uh, an appropriate developer that develops, uh, affordable housing. And, uh, the Affordable Housing Trust is able to raise between eighty and a hundred thousand dollars per unit. We think that, uh, it will just work in combination with some grants for first-time home buyer, affordable home, affordable housing that's through the state right now, um, that will, will be able to make that work. So, um, this is just a letter expressing support for that project from the Select Board memo, excuse me.
Great. Um, would anyone like to, well, are there any mem- members of the board or members of the public, Joe, um, who have their hands up?
No members from the public.
All right. Anybody on the board who wants to comment on this or have, has a question?
I think it's great.
Yes.
Great. Would someone like to make the motion?
That move to approve draft letter expressing support for the Affordable Housing Trust's request to the Community Preservation Committee for funding to assist in the development of affordable housing at twenty-four Cherry Street in Wyndham.
Gary, seconds?
All right, great. We'll take a roll call. Peter?
Yes.
Deirdre?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
And Ben is yes? That's great. Okay, um, all right, now it is six fifty-eight by my clock. And why don't we?
Yeah, I think.
Just take a pause and have them start the tax classification hearing. Steve, does that make sense?
Yeah, I think that makes perfect sense. Mr. Waddell is here on behalf of the Board of Assessors, um, to make the presentation. Our chief assessor, Terry Fontaine, um, is traveling and is stuck in Florida, uh, due to inclement weather.
Steve, actually Terry is on.
Oh, she is.
Yes.
Oh, she's presenting?
I believe so.
Okay, all right. Hey, see you later, Frank. Have a good night.
All right, great. Well, we're one minute before the time. I think we can probably get started and we'll have some exchange some pleasantries for a minute before we get into the meat of it. So, uh, Terry's gonna present?
Yes, am I, um, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, terrific. Uh, thank you, um, Chair Timman and members of the Select Board for your time this evening. Um, also, I would like to thank, uh, Town Administration, Steve Pullos, Joe Pesamato, and Michelle McGovern for their help this evening and throughout the year. And of course, uh, the Board of Assessors, uh, Chair John Buco, Clerk of the Board, uh, Lisa Craig. And a big thank you to Vice Chair Patrick Waddell, who agreed to step up and fill in for me this evening. Um, fortunately, that wasn't necessary, but he was prepared and willing. Um, so as the Select Board has, um, been through at least one of these, I think I will try to be as brief as possible. And, um, if necessary, I can elaborate or answer any questions that might come up. Um, but nothing much has changed with the procedure or with the data that would affect, uh, the voting tonight. So the Department of Revenue has, um, certified Wyndham's assessed values and, uh, that allows us to have the classification hearing this evening. Uh, the next step after the board takes its votes this evening will be for the Department of Revenue to set the tax Uh, the next step after the board takes its votes this evening will be for the Department of Revenue to set the tax rate. Think it's important to note to the public that the Select Board does not set the tax rate. That's the Department of Revenue. Um, on the next slide, you'll see the four options that the Select Board will vote on this evening. Michelle, if you don't, my thank you. Um, I'm not gonna elaborate here because they are um on the subsequent slides. And have greater detail. So the next slide shows the uh residential factor that the board will vote on this evening. That's arguably the most important one. Um, people refer to it as splitting the tax rate. We're having a single tax rate. Uh, historically, Wenham has had a um residential factor of one, meaning a single tax rate among residential properties. And commercial, industrial and personal property. Uh, the Board of Assessor certainly recommends a single tax rate, a residential factor of one. Um, as we have historically done, uh, Hamilton, uh Manchester and Chopfield all have a single tax rate. Danvers and Beverly, which are budding communities with a larger commercial base, uh do split the tax rate. But um, as you see on the slide, Wenham only has about three percent of its taxable value. In commercial, industrial and personal property. Uh, the next slide shows. Some scenarios if we did shift the rate, um and you can see if you shift it to the max at fifty percent. Uh, the the average residential property would only save a little over two hundred dollars. On their tax bill for the year and the average um commercial property would, it would cost them almost five thousand dollars. More than what they would already be paying. So certainly that um could drive out businesses um. And therefore, the Board of Assessors does not recommend, well, the Board of Assessors recommends a residential factor of one. If there are any questions, um otherwise the Select Board could vote on this option now.
Are there any questions or comments from members of the board as to the uh? Residential factor of one issue? Seeing none of their members of the public, uh Joe, who have their hands up?
There is not.
Alright, great. So uh Terry, would you recommend that we um? Just vote. Right now on on that issue and then we're gonna move on to open space and the other things separately, is that right?
I think the four options should be voted on separately.
Okay. Alright, I entertain a motion to select a residential factor of one for Wenham's. FY. Twenty. What?
Twenty-six.
Thank you, FY twenty-six tax classification. Is there a motion? Uh, Deirdre moves a second?
Gary seconds.
Great, I will take a roll call. Peter? Karen?
Yes.
Deirdre?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
And I think Peter stepped away. Uh, Ben votes yes, so we can now move on um to the next part of your presentation, Terry.
Thank you. Uh, the open space discount is very simple. The Board of Assessors has determined that there are no. Uh, parcels in Wenham that um that would um apply, that this discount would apply to. Uh, any of the parcels that we have that are vacant are either under a conservation uh restriction that's permanent. Or in chapter land, so the Board of Assessors does not recommend the open space discount be adopted.
Alright, uh, any comments or questions from the board on that issue?
I I have a quick question. It by not adopting it. Um, or I guess by by not voting for it, what what is the implications for that? I understand that it currently, as of today, doesn't apply, but if we don't vote for it. Um, like, what's the, wh- what would be the issue?
Sure, so the um option has to be voted on each year. So if next year circumstances should change, then um it could be, it could be adopted. For FY twenty-seven. Um, but just so the board, Select Board is aware and the public. There are only um open space parcels that have a discount in. Beverly, Rowley and Newburyport. Um, Beverly is right on the ocean. I, it's one of the beaches. Um, in Newburyport, it's on Plum Island, a couple of parcels and in Rowley, it's along the river. So they're all waterfront properties. Um, none of the other communities in Essex County adopt the open space discount.
By not adopting open space discount, does that inhibit us from having any accessibility to any grants? Or anything moving forward for the year?
Not that I'm aware of.
So it's not a no?
I I highly doubt it.
Steve, did you wanna comment on that?
Yeah, it's a no.
Thank you, Steve.
Yeah.
Any other comments or questions from the board on this issue? Okay, I don't see any other members of the public, um, Joe, who have their hands up?
No, sir.
Alright, um.
Move to not adopt an open space discount.
Gary seconds.
Alright, we'll take a roll call. Gary?
Yes.
Deirdre?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Peter? Peter stepped away. Ben is a yes, so that passes. Alright, uh, the residential exemption, Terry?
Yes, so the residential exemption, um, the Select Board could vote to adopt a residential exemption of any amount up to thirty-five percent. This would shift the tax burden from properties that are owner occupied onto properties that are either second homes or rented. Um, this is typically found in communities uh like Nantucket, Cambridge, um, where they have a. A significant number of second homes or um rental properties. So for Wenham, um, it doesn't really make sense. Um, and the Board of Assessors recommends uh not adopting a residential exemption.
Right. May, may uh. Raise an issue, perhaps not now, but in the future, um, of maybe taking, taking stock of. How many residences are used in the manner that you, as either as second homes? Or as rental properties, Airbnbs, that sort of, sort of thing, which I think technically, we don't have a bylaw that. Permits that, but um. It does raise an interesting point that if we ever got to the. Place where there were, there was some um. Critical mass of uh non-owner, non-owner occupied. Residences that it might be worth understanding what that is and then. It might factor into this. Um, analysis down the line.
Yeah, the percentage of properties would have to be significantly high in order to make it an effective uh shift of the tax burden.
Makes sense, okay.
Do we currently know the number of homes or residential properties that fall under? Um, y- y- um rental properties or non-owner occupy?
Um, I don't have that at my fingertips, I'm sorry.
I'm just, it's just like a piece of information so the board's aware that. If you were to adopt a residential exemption, um, you know, owner occupied or not, like, let's. Let's assume in this situation, it's it's owner occupied, because I believe that's, you know, obviously all the board members here live in the town. And. The way this works is you take, for easy math, you take a, let's say, a hundred thousand dollar exemption. And you apply it to every home in the town of Wenham. And you reduce your total asset class by that amount. So if you have, you know. You have a thou- you know, a thousand times a hundred thousand exemption reductions, and then you recalculate the. You recalculate your residential tax rate. So by reducing the total value of the homes by the hundred thousand. You've increased your tax rate, so your tax rate, just for uh the sake of conversation. Goes from fifteen dollars per thousand to seventeen dollars per thousand. Now, that works out to a net tax reduction for homes below approximately the midpoint. Because now you have a home that is, you know, four hundred thousand dollar assessed minus a hundred thousand dollars. Times a higher tax rate, so it's, if you were to, you know, in the scenario before, it'd be four hundred thousand dollars times a fifteen dollar tax rate. Now it's three hundred thousand dollars times a seventeen dollar tax rate. So that works out a net tax reduction. But as you move towards the midpoint, you approach a break even point where the taxes are the same in both scenarios. You know, without the exemption and with, even though you're receiving the exemption, you're still paying the same amount of taxes because of your home's value. But if you pass that midpoint, it actually becomes a tax burden shift onto the higher value homes, the ones above the median. So, you know, in in Wenham, we have a pretty evenly spread tax base, so you have roughly. You know, a a half of your tax base would actually see, although you're trying to benefit. Residents of the town, you're actually would be voting in a tax increase, not only to the people who rent their homes. But to people who are above the midpoint.
Okay, that's important information to to have if we ever, um, if we face that, that. Well, I guess we technically face the choice now, although the recommendation clearly is that we not adopt the residential exemption. Um, are there any other comments or questions from members of the board on the residential exemption? Seeing none, Joe, anybody with their hand up?
No.
Alright, great. Uh, would someone like to read the motion, Deirdre? It looks like you're prepared to do it.
Move to not adopt a residential exemption.
Gary seconds.
Alright, thank you, um, Peter?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Deirdre?
Yes.
And Ben is yes. Alright, thank you very much, and that brings us to our um, the final of the.
Yes, so the small commercial exemption is very similar to the residential exemption. Um, in this case, we have fifteen parcels in Wenham that are um commercial or industrial properties. So basically, you would be taking um the shift and. Shifting from the smaller of those fifteen parcels onto the larger commercial properties within that group of fifteen. Um, so certainly it's not, it would not be an effective exemption um in that case. So the Board of Assessors does not recommend adoption of the small commercial exemption.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from members of the board? Joe, anybody? Oh, Karen, go ahead.
Alright, I just have a quick question. So you're looking at not having the tax burden on the small businesses. Um, moved over to the large businesses because you're afraid that the large businesses aren't gonna come into town?
No, that's, that's the um residential factor. This is, you would be shifting the burden from the smaller. Um, properties that are uh classified as commercial onto some of the larger properties, uh say two twenty-five Main Street. Uh, three hundred Main Street. Um, it is just not effective. I did not prepare. A slide with um with some of the numbers, which I certainly could do for next year. Um, to show you what that shift would look like. Um.
My only concern is is that the major, I mean, ninety-nine percent of the businesses that we have in town are small businesses. And so if we can provide a little bit of tax relief towards the small businesses. Cause we don't have a a large commercial base, um, other than maybe one or two. Um, you know, I'd like to be able to give that small business property some tax relief.
Okay, it would, so the exemption would not apply to the business owner. It would be the property. Um, whether or not the property owner would pass that on to um the business owner, if, if. If they're not one in the same, I I don't know.
Okay, and if they are the same. Then we're not allowing them a tax relief to have the small business within Wenham where they could easily go anywhere else because they have a. A larger base.
But, you know, the the shift is, the exemption is shifted on to the other businesses. Is the key point. You you, similar to the residential exemption, you recalculate the rate. The commercial rate was, will go up. And you'll reduce the value of. The buildings that house a small business. So, you know, like the one next to um. The cheese shop, I believe, is leased out by a couple tenants.
Yeah.
They wouldn't see any reduction. They don't pay taxes, they pay a lease. So the owner that rents to them will. You know, it just, if theory that they, that they um, they qualify, would see a small reduction in taxes. But from, you know, case studies would have looked at in assessing that. You know, generally, the landlords don't pass on any of the savings to the small businesses you're trying to help.
We only have like five or six in town, is that what you asked them?
So you would have, so it would be in the entire burden that is exempted on these small, just so you know. Exempted on these small businesses will be shifted to whatever other business remains in town. You will be increasing their tax rate. It's not a zero sum game.
What's the um, what, what's the, what's the measure by which? It's determined who is entitled to the exemption? The value of the commercial property, what, what, how do, how does one qualify?
I I believe that you have to be. A cor- a corporation and have. Less than seven employees. And there's other, there's other qualifications that the state has to certify, but I don't have those in front of me.
Yeah, but I think, I think Karen raises a good point and be, I I'd certainly be interested to know whether. I mean, cause you're saying theoretically that this would be shifted on to the businesses that don't qualify as small businesses, but. It'd be, I think it would be useful to know. A, who are the, what, who are the business property owners? Obviously, that that information we have, but which of them? Wouldn't qualify, and we're talking about. We're talking about property owners on the one hand, who, as you point out, aren't, often aren't the. Operators of the business to the landlord. But then you're saying that one of the criteria is a certain number of employees for the business. Which would involve the tenant. Um, I realize that that's a different discussion than whether the savings would be passed on from landlord to 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 commercial tenant, but. I'd say, it would be interesting to know whether. You know, whether there are. Property owners in Wenham who would not qualify for this. It sounds like you think that there might be, but.
Also, if um, at at two twenty-five Main Street and three hundred Main Street, for example, all of the businesses that are there. Uh, like Steve said, they pay a lease, so if the property owner is now uh faced with a a significantly higher tax bill. That's going to affect the leases um of all of those businesses, because of course, the property owner is going to pass that along. Um, to to the tenants.
Hmm, we're not, we're not, uh, we're not painting property owners in a very positive light. Tonight, they're, they're, they're never gonna pass on the savings, but they're always gonna pass on the increased cost. Maybe, maybe there's truth to that.
We can do some modeling. We can certainly do some modeling for next time.
Um, I see Ga- Gary's hand is up. Gary?
So Terry, I think you said that all we're talking about is fifteen properties here, so I don't see the board. Penalizing, you know, the bottom five to sup- uh, you know, giving a break to the bottom five to penalize the top five. I think we'd be spending too much administrative time for just a miniscule change in the rates. And between a handful of properties, so let's just keep it as it is.
I agree with Gary.
Yeah.
So do I.
Uh, unfortunately, I'm not able to to respond to this because we don't have the numbers, we don't have. An idea of what the property owners would do, and being that there's only fifteen. I'm a little disappointed that we didn't do our due diligence and ask that before coming here, and I'm looking for a, um. Looking for a vote. Um, there's no way that without that information, we can determine. How it is that we're gonna potentially help support any business or any business um property owner.
I don't think you're supporting the business owner. If you tax the lower. The higher portion with the lower portion, and I mean, what justification do you have to say you small? Five ones get a break and the big five don't, you know, so it's, it's a transfer within the, that group of fifteen, so. I don't see the board, you know, penalizing a few of those for the others.
Historically.
Exemption, someone has to pay more. It's not an exemption across the board, right? So someone gets penalized, and I'm not in favor of penalizing any of our businesses. And also, I'll just point out that this has been reviewed every year by the Board of Assessors, and this is their recommendation.
I'm well aware of that, thank you, and um obviously, we're trying to keep the, the tax breaks. Um, for the small business owners as as much as possible, being that we do not have a large commercial property in. Options for anyone else to come in. The only options we have are for small businesses to come into town, just because we don't have the real estate. So if we're. The only options we have are for small businesses to come into town, just because we don't have the real estate. So if we're. My thought process is if we're gonna have to shift anything. Yeah, you do want to be able to to provide tax relief to the small businesses, because at the end of the day, those are the ones who are gonna be able to support. The town and the the commercial, um, setup that we have here. So I'm. Without the exact information, unfortunately, I can't make a response.
But so by by keeping a residential factor of one and not shifting the tax rate, um, uh, keeping a. Consistent, um, tax rate between residential and commercial properties, you are essentially giving. The commercial, uh, properties a break there. They're paying the same tax rate as the residential property owners. Um, and and it's a similar instance where it doesn't make sense with the sheer number. Of residential properties we have and and the very few commercial industrial parcels that we have. It it follows the same logic. I believe.
I just, I just have one, one final question on this myself and and I I clearly need to educate myself better on this, but. Is it, is it the case that if we were to adopt a small business exemption? Is it the case that? We know for sure that there are some businesses in the town of Wenham, some pro- commercial property owners in the town of Wenham. Who would not qualify for that and who therefore would. Pay a higher amount because it's a zero sum game within the amongst the fifteen property owners. I don't. Gary, you mentioned the big five and the small five. I just don't, I don't, I haven't heard anything that leads where I. Feel like I know that that's the breakdown, that the that categorization has occurred, but there's, but I. Need to, I need better education on it.
So there's say a parcel on Topsville Road that is, um, classified as industrial. It's mixed use, residential, industrial, um, that would not qualify, um. With the Department of Revenue. Standards, um, or the the qualifications that a business would have to meet. They would not qualify. That's one of your fifteen right there. Um, also, the exemption is only up to ten percent and it's. The, um. All of the eligible parcels, so ten percent of the value. Uh, it, we're not talking about a significant savings.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from members of the board? Seeing none, Joe, is anybody in the public who has their hand up?
No.
All right, and thank you, Terry and Steve, for, you know, for addressing these these questions. It's a good discussion and maybe that next year we. We do want to have some more modeling or something along those lines. Um, but with with that, um, I would entertain a motion.
Move to not adopt a small commercial exemption.
Gary seconds.
All right, we'll take a roll call, Karen.
No.
Peter.
Yes.
Gary.
Yes.
Deirdre.
Yes.
And Ben is yes. All right, thank you very much, Terry. Appreciate, um, the presentation. Is there anything else that we should, um? Be looking at tonight?
No, just that the LA five will need to be signed by the Board of Assessors and also, um, town administration and select board.
Great.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very, thanks a lot. Good night. Um. All right, that moves us to item C, which is, um, Wenham Climate Action. Committee action. Um, who's gonna present that? Deirdre, are you gonna take that one?
No, I can, I can give a brief, my mute, oh, no, I'm not. Um, yeah, so. Uh, the Climate Action, uh, Committee is here and I believe they brought with them a a presenter. And what this started out as a couple weeks ago is going to be just a review of the stretch code. Um, as the select board has discussed and incorporated into their goals and objectives, they wanted. Us to start exploring, um, you know, what goes into being designated a climate leader by the state of Massachusetts. And one of the things that are required to be a climate leader is to adopt the stretch code. Uh, however, um, the the Climate Action Committee has prepared a much more comprehensive. Uh, presentation that covers a a number of different areas that are required in the, um, to become a climate leader. It kind of where where we are today and what types of, what type of work needs to be done to get there. So, you know, I guess I'll start before, uh, you know, I I bring Lucy, uh, McGovern over. It's to start the presentation is, you know, just from a stretch code standpoint. You know, in a staff perspective, I feel like, you know, I'll represent. You know, Rich Maloney drafted that letter to to myself to pass on to the select board. I'm not sure if anybody had a had an opportunity to read it. But, you know, the the short of it is that, you know, he's in large support of maintaining uniformity. In the state building code. That the state, uh, does, the building code does typically, uh, over time. Um, come up to speed or come up to, um. Come up in in match the the green initiatives that are presented in the stretch code. And also his concern for the additional costs. That will be have to be borne by, uh, the developers or people building a new home in town. Or even, uh, uh, people at putting in addition, I think a, um, you know, something he pointed out to me and I didn't realize that. You know, if you put on a an addition of a thousand, I think it was a thousand square feet. Uh, or more, that, uh, you have to bring the entire residence regardless of its size. Up to code, uh, to meet the entire edge energy code, which could be, you know, is it extremely costly? And then there's a D O. E R report that is out there that, um.
What about Sal and Vegas?
Uh, the D O E R report that is also in the packet that. I will go through it, but basically, you know, and and some of the grants are changing and the mass save, so some some. Might be not quite as expensive, some might be a little bit more expensive, but the end result of the report is that, you know, that these. Changes do increase the cost.
Excuse me, excuse me, Steve, excuse me, Steve. Sorry to interrupt, but could. Everyone who's not speaking, um, mute their microphones, because there's some background noise, um, intruding into the meeting. All right, Steve, keep going, thanks.
Yeah, so it basically the the report, um, you know, is, although the numbers might change, plus or minus, depending on the category and what the. The next year's grants are gonna be doing in the mass save rebates. Uh, it does, uh, provide a a pretty clear picture that it will. The cost of construction, both in remodeling additions and new constructions. Uh, would increase as a result of adopting the stretch code. And, you know, I'm not speaking against it, I'm just, you know, providing information, uh, that was passed on to me, uh, for the board to make their own. Decision, but I know that, uh, Lucy McGovern is here tonight and, you know, Lucy, if you wanna. Wanna kick it off, I know you've presented a lot, you have put together a lot of material that you want to go through tonight.
Sure. Great, can you hear me?
Yes.
Good. Um, yes, Lucy McGovern, um, I'm the Chair of the Climate Action and Sustainability Committee. And, uh, thank you for the invitation to come and discuss. Um, Wenham's application, uh, to be certified as a climate leader community. So back in, um, September, uh, the committee. Uh, wrote a memo to the board, um, to the select board. Um, requesting your approval for the committee to move forward with the application. And in that memo, we summarized, uh, the reason why we thought, um, it was in Wenham's best. Interest to move forward and we highlighted the application key requirements, some of which we had already met. Today, we're fortunate to have with us, uh, Dylan Patel. Who is the Northeast Regional Coordinator for Green Communities, which is under the Massachusetts Department of Energy. He's able to present a more complete description of the program, the application process. And the benefits and even to address some of the questions concerning, uh, the stretch code. Uh, before I hand it over to Dylan. Um, who has a presentation, uh, I want to remind the board that the committee, um, is still seek, is is seeking approval. To complete the application, uh, which may require a warrant. Um, I also want to note that, uh, some of the members of the Hamilton Environmental Impact Committee are in attendance. As that committee is also seeking, uh, approval to move forward with Hamilton becoming a climate leader community. And, uh, we believe having the two towns align, um. Can only help in our ability to meet our climate goals, especially as we share some of the same resources. So, um, if Dylan is able to present, I don't, um. He can. Perhaps he can start, see.
Thank you very much, Lucy, and, uh, thank you, members of the Wenham Select Board. Um, I'm gonna go ahead and, uh, share my screen. I do have a fairly, um, long, uh, presentation, but, um, to be respectful of. People's time, I will try and, um, kind of. Go faster in certain respects and kind of pause more in, um. On more important topics. Did, uh, I just need to get approval for sharing the screen and it should be all set. There you go. So as Lucy was mentioning, um, my name is Dylan Patel. Um, I am with the Green Communities Division of the Massachusetts Department of, um, Energy Resources. Um, I serve the Northeast Region, including the the town of Wenham and, um. I'm just gonna, there we go. I, um, I'm gonna briefly talk about the Green Communities Division, which I'm sure a lot of people are already familiar with. And then talk a little bit more about the requirements to become a climate leader and the benefits of be- of being a climate leader. Some reason my cast is a little bit, uh, there you go. So, um, Wenham was one of the original, uh, green communities. Uh, it was, um, the first. Uh, one of the first green communities way back in twenty-ten. Um, and since, uh, and in the past fifteen years, we have, uh, really grown across all four corners. Of the Commonwealth. We now reach nearly three hundred municipalities and we are growing, um, every year. Um, we, we recognize our growth, we recognize our maturity, we continue to offer the, um. What is our bread and butter, our energy efficiency, um, and electrification grants, both to new. Green communities like Reading and to veteran green communities like Wenham. But we also recognize that the state is moving forward and climate change is a real threat now. Um, and therefore, we want to help communities, um, achieve. The the same kind of goals that Commonwealth is working towards, and that's why we've launched the Climate Leaders Program. Which is available for municipalities to achieve the next level of criteria, which I will talk about in the next few slides. Um, so over our fifteen years, we have really, uh, proven our worth. We have awarded nearly two hundred million dollars in grants across the Commonwealth. This has, um, real impacts both in terms of energy reduction, greenhouse gas reduction. And importantly, um, reducing the operational budgets, um, or operational expenses. Um, across many municipalities. We've also achieved substantial energy, um, reductions across, um, seventy-two municipalities. And on top of that, um, very tangible quality of life improvements by having improved technology. Um, in these buildings. So Wenham's journey has been quite long, um, into into the Green Communities Program. It started with your designation grant back in twenty-ten. And since then, you've been awarded, as you are all aware, eight competitive grants culminating in, um, your. Decarbonization grant of five hundred thousand dollars for the town hall. Um, over time, you've made incremental improvements in energy efficiency across. Your municipal portfolio and including the regional school district, making you very well placed for electrification. In a lot of your buildings and obviously you've already achieved that with your council on aging and with your town hall. Um. So, sorry, um, in terms of the, uh, why we've launched the Climate Leaders Program. It really builds on our success with the, uh, Green Communities Program. And it helps us align, um, our resources with what the Commonwealth is moving towards. With our, um, statewide goals to achieve net zero emissions by twenty-fifty. We want to provide those resources in a way that also engages the community. As well as, uh, provides, um, more opportunities for newer technologies to be adopted. Um, across your municipal buildings. There are many, um, recently, we awarded a certification status to, uh, ten more climate leaders. We kind of kicked off this entire process in twenty-twenty-three and opened up certification for municipalities, um. Earlier this year. Um, in the beginning of the year, we had eighteen municipalities and ten more were recently certified. Um, I apologize for the resolution of this graph of this chart. But as you'll see, there are many, uh, climate leader communities, most of them in the, um, Boston metro area. But, um, you'll also notice in Western Massachusetts and in the Cape Town Islands. So there are five criteria to become a climate leader, just as there were five criteria to become a green community. One of each, one of which you've already achieved by having a dedicated, um, energy committee serving, uh, serving Wenham. Um, I, there is a, uh, rec- uh, criterion to have a municipal decarbonization commitment. Which is usually done at town meeting. Um, I'm aware that, um, Wenham passed a, the Wenham Select Board passed a resolution back in twenty-twenty-two. To do the same, and I can check internally whether we can, um, accept that. Um, another, which is, um, currently ongoing and, um, is in later slides. Is to have a municipal decarbonization roadmap to, um, kind of chart out how. Your town operations would be fully electrified by twenty-fifty or close to it. And then the last, uh, two is to adopt a zero emission vehicle policy for your municipal fleet as well as for the R S D. Um, and to, um, and I'll actually say that Ha- Hamilton is un- undergoing a parallel process dialogue. Um, a- as well. And finally, to adopt the specialized stretch energy code. I also just want to point out that Wenham has, is already implementing the stretch energy code. And I will kind of talk a little bit more about that in the following slides. So to begin with, with the decarbonization roadmap, um. Wenham had actually applied for technical assistance to conduct a decarbonization roadmap. Um, earlier this year, which we awarded, we had a kickoff with Steve, with, uh, members of the, um. The Environmental Committee and with Wenham's shared energy manager, Vicky Missoni. Um, the process is underway and basically it is a high level roadmap that details how. Um, municipal operations for your largest buildings, including the regional school district, will achieve zero over time. This is not a fast, um, race. This is not, um, a sprint. We, we understand that this is a marathon and we want to be very opportunistic about this. This is about thoughtful electrification. This roadmap is also not considered a commitment, financial or otherwise by the town. It's essentially giving you. Um, a window into what is the best time to stop replacing your equipment when they do eventually fail. So that it, um, you don't default to a like-for-like fossil fuel replacement. It's about understanding when is the best time to electrify different components of your building. It also identifies when is an opportune time to put on solar, um, for certain roofs. This is not an in-depth study, it is a high level roadmap, but we do offer, um, assistance to do in-depth technical studies when you do become. A climate leader. This is an example timeline, um, not not rigid, but it gives you an idea of the trajectory that we're looking at. Starting slowly in the short term and then providing a much faster acceleration. Um, through twenty-thirty, forty, fifty, as technologies improve, costs go down hopefully. And there's more funding available and there's more opportunities, uh, um, for you to replace your equipment and your vehicles. Um, so now moving on to the specialized code. There are three energy codes currently in existence in Massachusetts, technically four with the fossil fuel fury. Free code, but that's really limited to ten municipalities as of right now. Um, so Wenham has adopted the, is implementing the stretch code. You've had the stretch code since, um, before twenty-ten. The next level up that was introduced in twenty-twenty-three is the specialized energy code. The specialized stretch energy code only affects new construction, and I'll get into the details in a little bit. But this is a map that shows who has adopted it throughout the state. Again, there is a concentration in the Metro West area, but you'll see a a lot of dark blue in Western Mass and in the Cape and Islands. Um, and including Wenham's neighbor Beverly. Um, in terms of the what the the specialized code entails, this is really the key slide. So as I've said, specialized code only affects new construction. The stretch code does interact with existing buildings, especially when they cross that one thousand square foot threshold, that is correct. But that's currently in effect in Wenham. Um the specialized code would not have any additional requirements for existing buildings, nor does it have any additional requirements for all electric buildings. Those would follow the rules that you currently have. What it does change is if you have a new construction that's built with fossil fuels, whether it's for clothes drying, um heating, hot water, or for cooking, then you just have to have bills um a dedicated electrical outlet to do a future electrical swap. This makes it much cheaper to do a future retrofit than having to like tear down the drywall like ten years later and, you know, hire an electrician to do it once the home is built. And then also, in most cases, to have solar on the rooftop to offset the emissions. This is in most cases, because if it's um mostly shaded with with trees, then you would not need to cut down the tree, you would not need to put on solar. Um there's also a mention of passive house. This applies to multifamily buildings larger than twelve thousand square feet. Um and what passive house is is basically an exemplary um certification standard for energy efficiency, really focusing on energy efficiency. There might be a slight cost increase, we've seen um empirically a one to four percent cost increase, but that's counteracted by the fact that with passive house, you're looking at anywhere between sixty and eighty percent reduction in your energy bills. Again, this has been empirically proven, not just modeled. So this um this would have to be adopted in town meeting. Um it is not a zoning ordinance, so it just requires a simple majority. Just as with the stretch code, when it is adopted, if it is adopted at town meeting, it the town also agrees to any future amendments there too, it is adopted as is. Um this would only affect new construction for which the permit is made after a certain effective date, which is usually twelve months, eighteen months after town meeting. So it would not affect any buildings that are under construction or for whom um a permit has already been applied. Um it's one of my responsibilities as a Green Communities Coordinator is um to do this kind of outreach, not just with the Select Board, with with any other boards, with the community at large for prospective voters or for builders, making sure that people are as educated as possible and to also have an open debate and dialogue. Because yes, there are some costs to this um with regard to the specialized code. It's also helpful to have people who are expertise, whether they're builders, developers, architects, who know about the specialized code, about passive house, and can speak to their own experiences and help quell some anxiety about that. There is a long road whenever the Select Board uh decides to um or whenever an article is presented in town meeting. Um and so that gives a long time to do this kind of outreach, and I'm very open to um supporting that. So that was a kind of a lot on the specialized code, I'm now going to move on to the zero emission first pol- policy. What this does is encourage electrification of the municipal fleet and the RSD fleet. This only applies um currently to um uh light-duty vehicles, so those under seventy-five hundred pounds. It prioritizes purchases of EVs only when commercially available or practical. If not, if that's not possible, then you move down what's known as a prioritization chain, which um steps into plug-in hybrids and then hybrids. And if none of those are feasible, then there's always the option for regular gasoline or diesel vehicles. Um we recognize that there is market limitations out there right now for certain types of EVs, so we want to build in that flexibility when it comes to that policy. Um we also have exemptions for heavy-duty vehicles, because also those, obviously those are very hard to electrify, and um emergency vehicles such as police and fire response vehicles. So all in all, this would actually only affect um a small percentage of uh town vehicles. And of course, green communities, um obviously understanding the fact that you have a current grant right now, but in future grants, you can also apply for funding for electric ve- electric vehicles uh for the incremental cost from green communities. So now I've kind of talked about what you have to do, now I want to talk about what you get. So um we have two grants under the Climate Leaders Program. One is a technical assistance grant, and one is known as the Accelerator Grant, which is a capital grant. Technical assistance, we provide up to a hundred and fifty grand to do any kinds of um electrical studies, feasibility studies, um engineering and design work, bid packages um for any kinds of decarbonization project. And then we'll also help fund the decarbonization project, which can include any of these technologies that you see on screen, such as solar, heat pumps, and storage. So as I've said, we can do things like test wells, just like with, you know, ground source heat pumps. Um we can also do pre-electrification work, understanding what the uh panel requirements are, whether you might need a service upgrade. Um but um if you're going with the solar route, we can pride buy down the cost of the PPA or direct ownership. And solar is obviously a great choice for an all-electric building because it helps reduce your operational costs and also reduces carbon emissions from the grid, so that's a win-win-win. Um so we have twenty-eight uh climate leaders so far, we've had um four applications uh recently. Um our accelerator and technical assistance grants are open until twenty twenty-seven, so some people are taking a slower route, really thinking about what they want to come in for, so that's why we only have four so far, but this gives you an idea of who's doing what and how much they're getting for it. So um Acton, Chelmsford have, you know, gone for the full full amount, one million dollars for decarbonization plus solar, and then Ashfield and Watertown also doing um solar as well. So um I kind of threw a lot out there, I um thank you everyone for uh listening to me, and I'm uh happy to take um any questions from members of the Select Board and from the town manager.
Thank you Dylan, that was a very comprehensive and um well-presented um slide deck, so thanks. Are there any members of the board who have questions or comments? Um for Dylan. Gary?
Couple of questions Dylan.
Yeah.
You know, the the vast majority of towns have adopted the stretch code.
Correct.
And it's got from the slide that fifty-five have adopted the specialized. How rapidly is that occurring? When did the specialized code start? These fifty-five.
Yeah, so the specialized code was available for adoption um in early twenty twenty-three. Um so it's been out for two years, well, I guess nearly three years at this point. Um so we've had really rapid growth, um es- especially last year. Um it slowed down a little bit, but um I guess it's a testament to say that we've already had fifty-five communities in just under three years.
One other quick question on the um the thousand square feet, which uh induces a whole rebuild of the house. Is there any exemption for affordable housing or for ADUs that came into effect this past year?
So the the thousand square feet is a threshold for additions um as well as certain renovations, and I want to be clear again. This already applies to the town of Wenham. Um this is under the regular stretch code, and this is yeah applies to the three hundred other municipalities that have adopted the stretch and specialized code. So there are exemptions for historic buildings. Um and historic is um loosely defined. So it can be like a hi historic preservation committee, the state housing uh state historic preservation office. Um it could be even like the building inspector can certify that, you know, compliance would harm the historic nature um of the building. When it comes to ADUs, they're kind of treated differently. The um energy efficiency requirements is really limited to the extent of the ADU itself. Where regardless of whether it's attached or detached, because that's just how the way that the testing works. So that would not require a whole house retrofit or remodel.
Thank you for that clarification, because I think it's an important point for uh affordable housing in town.
Understood.
Um any other questions or comments among board members for Dylan? I don't see, oh Deirdre, yes.
So thank you for the presentation, that was very helpful. I have a process question, so I guess if we're considering this evening approving the application for climate leader designation to go forward, how does that get impacted where the code still has to be approved by town meeting? So do you need that approval first before we do the application or that can be pending? While this is submitted, like how does how do the pieces fit together?
Um that that's a very good question, so um your your vote tonight um would probably would likely proceed the um the the vote at that town meeting, right? So it's not necessary that we need proof of the vote tonight, that's not something that we would need, but we would definitely need um a um minutes from the town meeting if it was passed at town meeting to adopt the specialized code. So whether your your vote tonight is more of an internal vote um for lack of better words.
And the only piece that needs to be approved by town meeting is the specialized code.
Exactly, the so the the town meeting uh voters would vote on the specialized code, the Select Board and the uh Hamilton Wenham Superintendent, uh Regional School District Superintendent um would sign off on the uh zero emissions vehicle policy.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from board members? All right, seeing none, Joe, are there any members of the public who wish to speak?
Yes, there is one hand raised, um Sue.
Okay, if you could bring her over.
Go ahead, Sue.
Am I brought over?
Yes.
Wow, that was an event. Um I'm Sue Petrolia, six-eating rodent Wenham, uh I am a member of Wakask and also Hamilton Wenham Climate Action Team. I was the um town Sustainability Manager at the time that we became Green Communities in two thousand and ten. It was an exciting time, and passing the stretch code was a big deal. It was, it was hard, it was a big event. Um but at the end of it all, the town meeting approved it overwhelmingly. Uh I want to be sure that we understand, and I think Dylan helped me here, that this specialized stretch code only affects new buildings. I understand the um the building uh inspector has had uh some negative feedback about the stretch code, which does affect, you know, expansion and other things in homes that are here already. But this specialized stretch code only affects new buildings, which I think is important for Wenham in particular because of potential expansion and three A things and stuff like that. So I just want to throw my um support to the passing the uh specialized stretch code. Thank you.
Thanks Sue. All right, any other, any other um hands up, Joe?
No, that is it.
Okay. All right, so on the agenda, I believe that there's a proposed motion that the Select Board vote to um authorize the Climate Action Committee to apply on the town's behalf to be a climate leader, is that the proper description of what we're being asked to do tonight? Deirdre, is that your understanding as well? Or Lucy, yes?
Yeah, I just, I think uh we'd like to uh whatever legwork there is and and to get um the 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 votes needed or the documents needed and everything needed to finalize an application, we'd like to to get um approval to do that.
So if we, if we, if we do that, if we vote as a board um in favor of the motion as it's presented, I just, Deirdre, you kind of asked this question of Dylan procedurally, but does that mean that what we would be authorizing is that the Climate Action Committee would then work with appropriate staff in Town Hall to prepare those filings that Dylan is going to need that meet the um climate leader criteria other than the uh specialized code vote of town meeting? In other words, like when when we vote, if we vote to support this, that's going to um uh that's going to then require certain specific actions by someone, and and apparently Lucy, that would be your committee working with staff to prepare things to then send to the state, is that right?
Yes, and and whatever approvals are needed, like for a policy for the the uh the electric vehicle policy, I would assume would need a a vote to say that the the town is adopting this policy. So we'd like to be able to help whoever it is, Steve, Joe, and everyone, whatever we can do to pull that together. Um. Yes.
Okay.
So there it I I I would have to defer to you and and Steve and to know it how a policy becomes a policy, but um
Understood.
It might require coming back to you to say, yes, keep going.
I think we can probably um embed some of tho- those principles in in the motion, um Dylan, I saw you had your hand up.
Um yes, thank you Benjamin, so um I just wanted to highlight, so I'm guessing I wanted to highlight that there are kind of some concurrent tasks that um that would be needed, so one would obviously uh have an article at town meeting to adopt the specialized energy code. Um the Select Board would need to um adopt the zero emission vehicle policy and also the H H W RSD uh would also need to approve it as well. Um at the same time, you're currently uh drafting a municipal decarbonization roadmap, we're working with your um energy manager to do that. Um one thing I did not mention in the presentation is that there are two opportunities a year to apply for the climate leader certification, one at the end of June, one in the end of December. So um technically, you can apply any time of the year, but that's when we kind of uh review them. So basically, once you have those, all of those documentation together, wh- whenever in that in that six-month period is when you'd be able to apply policy to become a climate leader.
See, okay. So are there any other um comments or questions that anyone has, board, staff, public?
Mister Chairman, there is a Sue would like to speak again.
Hey, uh Sue, please.
Sorry, it's me again. Um I believe that Vicky Missoni is on the call also, and she would be a very integral part of working with um Green Communities, she has been all along, and uh she will be very important to us. Um there was something else I was gonna say, but I forgot what it was, oh Dylan. It uh can you explain quickly our situation in Wenham in terms of grants? We are maxed out on our Green Communities grants for a while. Is that true?
Um uh I want, I guess I want to clarify what maxed out means, so you currently have a decarbonization grant, right, for the town hall. Um that kind of, that gives you a cooldown period of two years after that was awarded. So you would not be able to apply until for Green Communities Competitive Grant um until early twenty twenty-seven again. Um but on top of that, for municipalities that have had one million dollars in competitive grant funding, which Wenham has, um your funding amount, your eligibility is cut in half from two hundred and fifty grand to a hundred and twenty-five grand. So you're still able to apply for Green Communities funding, just not as much in the future.
Thank you.
Based on the discussion that we've had tonight, Deirdre, did you want to say something? I'm sorry.
Um well, I don't know if it's what you're about to say, but I think two things, one is if Vicky has any comments before we move to a vote, but I do think One is if Vicky has any comments before we move to a vote, but I do think the draft motion is appropriate because I think what we're approving tonight is in principle to pursue this climate leader designation. And we leave the individual specific approvals until their policy has been created. Because we need to approve the zero emission policy. We need to bring the, the specialized code to town meeting and so forth. So I think broadly what we're signaling tonight is that we approve going forward with this.
Okay, Karen, I see your hand up.
Yeah, I was just wondering, um, Kate's on the phone, um, if she could weigh in and just give us uh, her quick opinion. That would be great.
All right, um, although before we ask Kate to speak, if she is, I see that she's on the, on the side of the Zoom world. Is Vicky Missoni, um, a panelist right now? And if so, Vicky, do you wish to say anything? Joe, is Vicky?
I'm here. Hey, everyone.
Hi, Vicky. Why don't we start with, with you? Um, your name has come up several times, so I want to give you the opportunity to give your input.
Sure, thanks. So I'm Vicky Missoni. I, I know most of you, but I'm the part-time energy manager for Hamilton Wenham and also the Regional School District. Um, I've worked in town since 2014, so, um, I came right on the tail of Sue getting Green Communities designation for you all, and I've worked through all those grants and getting tons of money through that program for both towns and the school district. So I've been following this climate leaders program closely. I think it's a very logical next step for both towns. You have a history of being cutting edge on these programs and, you know, you're right there with the Swampscots and the Saloms and the Beverlys and, um, I'll certainly work with the Climate Action Committee and with Steve and Joe to help with all the mechanics of getting the application together, um, and, and helping the town move through the process. So I think I would be really a mechanics person as far as those of you who are asking procedurally what's next. Um, but, but like, uh, Dylan or maybe Deirdre said, tonight is really about getting the select board's feel for is this something you want to pursue or not? And, um, Hamilton talked about this last night at their select board, so as Dylan or maybe Lucy mentioned, they're moving in parallel. And it would be great for Hamilton and Wenham to both become climate leaders in 2026. Thank you.
Thank you, Vicky. Um, Kate, are you, um,
So it's his turn?
Yes, yes.
Do we, does the select board need any more information to decide on which way to go with this?
Um, I don't think that I do, but Karen?
I don't.
Okay, uh, well.
Deirdre?
I think it's you're being a little dismissive. I'd like to hear from Kate.
Yeah, we should allow Kate to comment.
Alrighty.
I agree. Kate?
Yeah, so I just echo what Vicky said. Um, Dylan, your presentation was, um, very clarifying for all of us, and I think, um, this is a great next step. Thank you very much.
So, um, I support this. Um, I don't love the wording of the motion, though. Um, so I'm gonna, um, propose a motion and see where it goes. Um, I move that the Wenham Select Board support the application for climate leader designation and that it authorize the Climate Action Sustainability Committee to begin preparing such application, working with staff and seeking necessary subsequent votes as needed in order to complete the application.
Peter, close seconds.
All right, we can take a roll call. Karen?
Yes.
Deirdre?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
And Ben is yes. Thank you, Lucy, Dylan, um, Kate, Vicky, and all of the members of the Climate Action Sustainability Committee for all your work on this. And, uh, it's great that we're able to take this next step.
Thank you.
Very much.
I'd like to thank everyone who came this evening in support of this. It's great to see colleagues from Hamilton as well as our committee members, um, the Climate Action Team. This is a fantastic turnout, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. All right, that leaves us with, I think, two agenda items. One is an update on the Route 1A project and the other is an update on the solar project. Um, neither requires a vote, is my understanding. So Steve, maybe we could start with, um, item. Uh, I guess it would be, sorry, um, just looking at the agenda. Oh, yeah, item, sorry, item F, the DOT 1A project.
Okay. Um, Michelle, if you could just scroll down to the, to the maps. So basically what this is, and I, you know, as an email that I sent earlier, this is the first time you guys have seen it uh, as of about noon time today, so I don't expect any vote, uh, unless, you know, you're confident to take one. But basically what this is are, um, these are temporary uh, and permanent easements and takings that the state will need to, um, do that. These, 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 these maps here that you have in front of you are basically
Do you have map?
Are just municipally owned parcels that require takings. The private landowners, there are no takings required, but there are some temporary easements. That's a separate process that we're working on. But this is just municipal-owned property that's impacted by the project. So what you have in front of you here is gray, unfortunately, the color code is not on the map, but the gray, um, is, uh, a temporary easement, construction easement. So this will be that they'll need access to that to, uh, work and store vehicles and, uh, you know, do site work and things like that. The pink is a permanent easement that would need to be taken. And then the, um, the orange is a, uh, a, a taking that, you know, basically you can see the way Friend Court was, was laid out. I know it's like originally it was a very small road, um, all the way over to the right with the dotted line. And now with the, you know, the kind of aerial rendering, you can see it's been expanded onto the town-owned property. Uh, you know, so the, the way actually crosses the town-owned and the state here is proposing to, you know, to take all that land and, and make it part of the public way. And if we scroll down, there are three other maps, two other maps, excuse me, that, uh, depict the changes with some much smaller takings, this one being that one small temporary easement. You see down on the, on the corner left, uh, and then also a very small uh, taking, uh, as part of that original orange triangle, much bigger triangle along the edge of French Court kind of finishes off that taking down to the edge of the road. Um, and then if we, we keep going down, there's one more map. Can see here now we are, we are looking at the fire station and a couple of um, temporary easements and, um, one permanent taking, which is, I'm not sure, but I believe it's some sort of utility uh, need that if you can see up at the top, there's a small gray circle with a green outlined uh, within the temporary easement. This is something that, that the state would need. So these, these, these documents that you have before you, the requests, whether it's tonight or next week, would be to authorize me to sign on behalf of the board. Council has reviewed these documents. They're basically releasing the state from any liability and also us acknowledging that they, uh, need, you know, the use of these, they need to either take or use these, uh, pieces of land temporarily. Uh, and that they will be giving us no money for it and that we're acknowledging that we are aware of that. From, from what we've been told, in order for the project to move forward, the state, uh, needs us to sign all these documents and needs the pieces of land as itemized here without changes.
But we could vote, we could vote on that on December 16th, is that right?
Yep. Yeah, so any questions that come up tonight, I can, uh, I don't know if Kate's still here. She probably has a little bit better understanding than I do. Uh, but if we don't have the answers to your question, it'll give us a couple of weeks to get them and then we can revisit it for a vote on this, is it 16th or 17th?
16th, I think. Yeah. Karen, you have your hand up?
Yeah, Steve, I just had a quick question. So that land, it will be used for potential storage? And items, is that what you said at the beginning?
Yeah, so like, uh, they're gonna be working in the public way, so they need act, they need to be able to, you know, they might have to dig up, you know, like you can't dig right to the border. They're gonna have to, if they're, if they're demoing a sidewalk or whatever, they're gonna disrupt the land adjacent to the sidewalk onto town-owned property. And also trucks will need to be able to pass and repass, excavators, things of that nature. They may store trucks there overnight, you know, if that's the section that they're working on.
I guess my question is, is like, are there any hazardous materials? Because that's a house right there, right? So at the corner of where like the
What's the point you're talking about?
Yeah, um, what you have up on screen right now where it says like 602 on the left, that, you know, there's houses there. So are they gonna be putting items there that are hazardous? Are they gonna be putting items there that potentially are toxic? Um, I'd hate to have a truck there for the week, um, and, and have that. Um, I mean, I don't care about aesthetically pleasing. I'm more concerned that, you know, is there anything that, that is a potential hazard to the homeowners?
I mean, nothing obviously that's prevented from, you know, construction law and safety and environmental concerns. It is a state project, so they're not, you know, but oh, we can, I can get, I can get clarification on what is gonna be any, uh, you know, um, hazardous materials stored there. There will be, you know, just for, the, these are the temporary easements that impact town-owned land. There are a number of easements similar to this along uh, the route, uh, both sides of the route that impact private lands. Uh, so we're gonna be talking to them and they will need to be given access, uh, similar to what we're talking about here. So there are, there are gonna be houses that are gonna be impacted directly in front of them. And from what we've been told, it's a non-negotiable, um, if we, you know, if this, if we don't want to move forward with these takings and the state can't move forward with the project.
Which, which would be a, a shame. I think we need to, uh, we need to do what needs to be done, in my opinion, to get DOT to sign off on this and, uh, and move ahead. Um, having said that, I personally wouldn't object to putting the vote off for two weeks, you know, to give more time to look at these materials and have any, any questions, but I'd also be comfortable supporting it tonight. I don't know how other members feel.
Uh, I'd be fine supporting it tonight.
All right, any other, Gary?
Tonight's okay.
Um, any members of the public who want to be heard on this?
No hands raised.
All right. Uh, would someone like to make a motion? Is there a motion to be had? Steve, um, what would?
Um, can you pull up the agenda real quick? Uh, a, a move to authorize the town administrator to sign the right of entry and land damages agreements for the Mass DOT Route 1A project, maybe say as presented in the packet tonight.
Still moved. Uh, Gary?
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. We'll take a roll call though. Peter?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Deirdre? Did you say yes, Deirdre? Sorry, I'm
Yes.
Okay. And Ben is yes. Thank you. All right, that moves us on to the last item, I believe. Steve?
Yeah, so I just thought we could, um, you kind of go, go over the HTC. I want, I want to say that the, uh, HTC did ultimately support, although with a number of, uh, stipulations, a solar array to be erected in the rear parking lot, they reserve the right to, um, uh, they reserve, they, they have the, the right to approve, uh, the size, uh, shape, um, well, shape and look and materials used for the solar array. However, they are generally okay with the idea of a solar array being assembled in the historic district in the rear, uh, parking lot of Town Hall. Uh, but, you know, which, which I thought that, that, that was, you know, a big win for, uh, you know, the, the town for, for the, for, you know, from the standpoint of, of being able to put a solar array, um, and their willingness to, you know, work with our climate needs and incorporate that into uh, the historic nature of, of the downtown. But the numbers have changed significantly from when we first visited this, uh, back in the late summer, early September, um, in which the lower array in the lower parking lot in a steel structure was effectively budget neutral. And by, you know, budget neutral, I mean that we would essentially shift, for easy math, if we spend, you know, we're currently budgeting about $10,000 uh, in energy costs to run Town Hall in both electricity and fossil fuels, uh, it will be soon all electricity with the, once the GO is fully operational. And, um, we would be shifting those $10,000 to, you know, really just alone that we would need to take out to build the sol- solar array. And those $10,000 would go towards your, your loan amortization payment over the next 20 years. So by budget neutrals, we don't have to budget any more money. However, we, you know, we are budgeting money to pay, pay for it. But now the landscape has changed, given the federal tax credit and, um, the kind of the logjam of folks trying to get in with, and both installers and equipment suppliers to make the December, uh, 31st deadline with a 30% federal tax credit. Uh, we've seen prices increase by about 22%. On top of that, the cost to install, uh, a wood structure, which was the preference of the HTC, and also relocate the structure to the upper lot. Um, results in the town needing to, to maintain it budget neutral, the town would need to come up with about $240,000 um, through, uh, capital, uh, one-time funding to essentially pay down the project to a level that can be, uh, funded through, uh, budget, budgetary funds, uh, that are already, uh, budgeted for in our, uh, utility line items. So I kind of wanted to get the board's feedback from there, and you know, and the more, I think, just from my personal opinion, the more, you know, just listening to, uh, I believe his name, it was Patel, uh, gave the presentation there and, and, you know, it was something that I had been thinking about and, you know, he brought up that there is funding for that for feasibility study for solar. If the town may, you know, given that, you know, the sense of urgency that was there to get the 30% tax credit is almost completely erased by the escalation in the market over the last three months that, you know, maybe we want to cool our heels. Um, and, you know, we're pursuing this climate leader, uh, cooling our heels does not, uh, impact us pursuing the climate leader designation. And if we can pursue the climate leader designation, it seems to open up a whole bunch of grants that could fund a study that, you know, instead of us just piecemealing solar arrays around town, but to really to take a look at it, be a little bit more thoughtful. Um, and, you know, knowing exactly how many panels, you know, how much energy does the town use in all its buildings, exactly how many panels? And how much room does this take up and actually put a plan in place that, you know, makes us carbon neutral by the 2040? Um, and, you know, and knowing that we're gonna get there instead of just, you know, creating solar arrays in hopes, I just think that that might be, you know, a better way that we can go about it and, you know, maybe, um, benefit from some economies of scale of doing more than one project at once. Um, or buying more panels and, you know, and, and Um, or buying more panels and, you know, and, and, and kind of systematically, uh, you know, laddering them, them in over a number of projects. I, you know, I don't know. I just, it was just a thought that I had.
Alright, thanks, Steve. Um, any comments or questions from the board? Alright, so you don't need any, oh, Gary?
Yeah, so, uh, looking at this additional two hundred fifty thousand, or two hundred forty thousand dollars, plus the ten thousand year or twenty years. So we're talking about half million dollars for this project. I think it would be prudent to, um, look at alternatives that perhaps the development of solar at another parcel or larger project, or perhaps this money could be better spent on a, uh, a larger scale project to, uh, accomplish townwide electrification or net zero rather than, as Steve said, doing one small panel place for the town hall and then maybe years later do another small one for fire department, another one for COA. So maybe we should, uh, take a bigger view at this.
Thank you, Gary. Any other comments, questions?
I support what Gary says.
I do too. Deirdre, did you want to say something?
Just any comments, um, from Lucy or Sue, anyone, or Vicky, anyone in attendance?
Um, Mr. Chairman, Colby Stoddard has his hand raised.
Okay. Alright.
Go ahead, Colby.
I'm sorry, can, can you guys hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
Great. Um, I just wanted to, um, make a suggestion that there is the community choice aggregation program that, um, we could consider, um, you know, so this is an ability to do, um, kind of bulk, uh, purchasing agreements for electricity in the town. And if the municipality wants to opt for the hundred percent renewable, um, option for that, that's a very, uh, low effort way of, uh, well, I won't say that for Steve Polis, but, um, it's a, it's a low, um, commitment from a, a infrastructure standpoint. So, um, I would just suggest looking into that.
Hey, Colby, thanks. That is actually in process. So that was approved at last year's town meeting to go forward. So that is, um, running in parallel.
Excellent. Thank you.
Um, I believe Vicky had her hand up too.
I did. Hi, everyone. Again, I would just want to comment that when we designed the Wyndham Town Hall decarbonization project, obviously it's, it's going to be an all electric building going forward. So our electricity use is going to be significantly increased. Um, so, you know, the best way to offset, you know, electricity is more expensive than gas. That's the bottom line. I just did the analysis on the Wyndham COA. And their utility costs are up because electricity is more money. So really the best way to do it is to offset with the renewable onsite. Um, so while you can do it offsite, it's, um, because of the economics of what you get back in credit from an offsite solar, it's not exactly the same as putting it onsite or what they call it behind the meter. And there's a lot of details and logistics, but, um, it's not as lucrative for the town to do something offsite to offset that increased electric costs. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do petroleum as well, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, I do.
Um, I was at the HTC meeting on Monday and, um, I understand the concerns of the HTC and, and all the members about the look of it. Uh, it was interesting because I was so one hundred percent pro, um, but I do understand, uh, their concerns. I do also understand, um, and, uh, reiterate Vicky's comments that putting something onsite, uh, works a whole lot better than having it somewhere else. Um, electricity likes to be where it's needed. Um, so it's a difficult choice for you. I understand it. The climate action team and the, um, when I'm, uh, with CASK is in favor of the, uh, the canopy. Um, so just want to throw that out there. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public or the board? First, the public, Joe?
No other hands.
Okay. Uh, if, anyone from the board wish to speak?
I'll just say, I, I mean, I'm definitely still in favor of trying to see this through in putting the solar panels, um, at Town Hall essentially to offset the Town Hall energy use. But I do agree that we may need to pause to try to figure out the financials of how to make this a little bit more viable. Um, but not, that is not scrapping the project or in any way putting this aside. Um, but just thinking it through a little more carefully and what our options may be.
And so what the HTC recommended was upper lot with the wood cladding. And I, if we could get there, that, that to me is the, the best way to do it. Cause otherwise it's just going to look so, so a steel structure um, in the parking lot, right, right next to Town Hall is not going to look good. So let's explore other ideas or other sourcing needs.
I mean, you have a couple. You know, if, I mean, you have, you have a couple of options. You know, one would be a capital request. I mean, ultimately a select board sets the capital, um, list, but the, the plans committee reviews it, but will be asking town meeting for about a two hundred forty thousand dollar appropriation to move forward with the project as currently estimated. Uh, you know, however, you know, we are in the background, you know, checking prices and um, you know, there, there, there is some hope that, you know, I, I don't know if it means it would align with this year's town meeting, but once the log jam clears that the prices will, again, the thirty percent credit isn't there anymore, but the thirty percent credit is eroded almost completely away, um, with the price inflation, that prices will stabilize and go back down to levels similar to where they were over the summer. So it kind of puts us in the same place. Um, you know, I'm just, it's, it's really the, the question, you know, tonight to the board is, you know, and similar to, you know, in line with, with the way you've been discussing is, it does the board want to continue to move forward with the project as proposed, uh, you know, given the timing or, um, you know, kind of gamble that prices will stabilize and, um, you know, we can do something different, you know, maybe a little bit bigger array back there where it's kind of out of sight and, uh, you know, contribute, uh, not only offset the the town's, um, energy use, the Town Hall energy use, but also go, maybe go towards, uh, other buildings as well. But that's a little bit out of my expertise on how that works with the behind the meter and front of the meter and all that, all that stuff.
So if we, if we don't vote tonight to um, support a change in the current course of action, does that mean that, that there'll be a submission made by December thirty first with the details to be worked out thereafter, including whether there'd be an appropriation next year for the
Yeah, I mean, well, there would be, I think, a leap of faith on ESG's part that if the select board shows at this meeting to move forward as proposed, that we would be, the plan would be to put forward a, a capital request to fund it, uh, and they would, again, I'm not, you know, maybe Vicky knows more, but, um, the, um, to start securing the panels and get the panels, the serial numbers applied to our account, which I believe is critical in establishing that first five percent of project completion to qualify for the grant. Um, and then if, you know, if things fell apart, then there is a, the town would essentially be signing up for uh, ten thousand dollar penalty for breaking the contract and they would eat the rest of the costs associated with getting us to the five percent. So they would be taking a gamble and we would also be taking a gamble.
Yeah, you have your hand up?
Uh, yeah, thank you. Just a quick, uh, aside, just from the HTC kind of standpoint, they issued a certificate of appropriateness, um, that generally is only good for twelve months. Not that we couldn't go back to the HTC, but the current motion that was approved, um, in the certificate that was issued last week is only good for twelve months. I just wanted to throw that out there.
Alright, well, it's December second. So if, if we, if we don't change the status quo, um, is there any risk that in the next twenty-nine days that we would be submitting something or signing documents to continue to move forward? And yet, subjecting the town to some kind of financial risk as opposed to determining that there are additional expenses that would need to be met in order to complete this. And then maybe those don't get approved, but it doesn't, you know, it, so that would stymie the project, but wouldn't necessarily create financial liability for the town.
I, I think, you know, in order to make the credit as, in, in the deal presented, the, the two hundred forty thousand dollars is taken into account at the credit. If the select board gives, um, it'd be okay to move forward with that process in order to make the December thirtieth deadline, you're basically committing us to, if the project doesn't go forward, a ten thousand dollar loss.
Hmm.
We would have to pay to ESG because I, you know, that, they, they will have to start the design per, at least purchase, I, again, I'm, I'm not, but I think purchase or have some sort of purchase agreement with, uh, solar panels to get the serial numbers, uh, do some design builds. And so they're going to be into it for more than ten thousand dollars, but that's kind of their, their skin in the game. And our skin in the game is ten thousand if, if things were to change.
Is the, is the ten, if, if, for example, town meeting didn't approve two forty in the spring?
Yep, or just we decided we just changed our mind.
Done it. Okay. Gary?
A question for Steve. The thirty percent tax credit represents how many dollars against the overall project?
Um, I believe it's roughly twenty, like about a hundred and fifty thousand.
Alright, so essentially, uh, I would say we ought to just proceed as we're going right now, see if we can make the thirty-one December deadline. And that gets us a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, a significant portion even of the increased cost. But, uh, if it looks at any point that we're not going to get that tax credit, I think we really need to step back and redo all the numbers. Cause, um, I'm just showing you a quarter million dollars covering a ten thousand dollar a year electric bill. That's a twenty or twenty-five year payback. So pretty long.
Alright, you're okay with the ten thousand dollars?
Yeah, you know, ten against one fifty, I think that's a reasonable, uh, risk level.
I agree with Gary.
Right. Thank you, Karen. Thank you, Gary. Any other comments? Alright, so it doesn't look like there's going to be a motion made tonight to do anything different than what we're doing. So it seems like the consensus is that, um, is essentially as Gary just laid out, which I also agree with. Um, so I don't know that there's anything more to be said or done on this subject. Um, any other members of the public who have hands up, Joe?
No.
Okay. Great. Alright, that completes our agenda items, um, and entertain a motion to adjourn.
One quick question?
Yes.
So Steve, uh, have we decided where we're meeting on Saturday?
Oh, yes. Uh, good, good question. I meant to say that in my update. We're going to do the COA. Unfortunately, we're just not going to get out. The plan was to do it in the select board meeting, but, uh, select board meeting room, but uh, we're just not going to get out of here by Friday. It's going to be sometime next week. So we moved it to the COA. Eight thirty. Yep.
Alright, is there a motion to adjourn?
During
Peter, that's your job.
PM. Sorry, ready.
Second.
Um, Karen?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Deirdre?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
And I'm yes. Alright, thanks, everybody.
Thanks, Steve, Joe.
Thanks, Jim.
Have a good night.
Thank you.